We convened our meeting from yesterday. So as we get started, we're gonna ask Commissioner Campbell if he'd lead us in the indication, and we'd ask Commissioner Boreham if he would lead us with the pledge following. Will everyone please stand?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
So just as yesterday, we're gonna go ahead and open up with our, we're opening up with our public comments. And before we do that, what I'm gonna do this time is we'll go ahead and kinda give a brief overview for anyone who wasn't here yesterday. We'll give a brief overview of the ordinances for both the county and the city. And we'll start with the county ordinance, if you're looking up at the screen. Putnam County Code, Section 4-1, Closing Hours. Vacation of Premises. Item A. The daily hour of closing for all vendors engaged in sale or dispensing of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises in the unincorporated areas of the county is hereby set and declared to be 12:00 midnight. Provided however, that the closing hours for Fridays, Saturdays, and New Year's Eve shall be extended until 2:00 a.m. No vendors are open or reopened for business before 7:00 a.m. Or 12 noon on Sundays. So when you look at the county's ordinance, the county's ordinance restricts vendors from opening their businesses at 7:00 a.m. daily and 12 noon on Sundays. Item B, go back, item B. Within the period of 30 minutes following the closure hour set forth in Subsection A of this section, all customers and patrons, guests shall vacate the premises of the vendor. Alcohol beverages shall not be served, served to, consumed, or in the possession of any person on said premises. Goes through loitering, and it talks about any vendor at that point. But if you look at what, if you go back and look at what the county is dealing with, daily hours of closing for all vendors engaged in sale or dispensing of alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises. It is 12:00 midnight. So the only thing that they're dealing with is consumption on premises. They're not dealing with any other aspect as it relates to the alcohol. Now we'll go to the next slide. City hours of sales. Prior to 2005, our ordinance was a bit more restrictive than the county's ordinance because we dealt with sale, consumption, serving, or permitting to be served or consumed at any place holding a license under the state of Florida except between the following hours, Monday through Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Sunday, noon to midnight. Then this is the exception. There will be no restriction however, on the sales of beer and wine regardless of alcoholic content for consumption other than on the premises. So the, the only restriction, again, on the sale of beer and wine, there should be no restriction on the sale of beer, sale of beer and wine regardless of alcoholic content for consumption other than on the premises. So there is no restriction unless it's on premise. There should be no restriction of hours of sale for consumption on premises of beer and wine regardless of alcoholic content. And licensed eating establishments have a seating capacity of order 75 persons. So what that meant was, there was no restriction on any business that had conceding capacity, that were considered eating establishments with 75 persons. And so any restaurant or quasi-restaurant type could come in. If they had 75 people and they were considered to be an eating establishment, they could, they didn't have a restriction. So we go to the next slide. One more. And so, location restrictions. For the purposes of this subsection, all distances shall be measured by the nearest property line. The following location restrictions shall apply. Licenses shall not locate, be located within 300 feet. This is all the perimeter stuff. Let's go to the new ordinance. You just passed it. Right here. One more.
(inaudible)
No. Go back to four.
There.
Okay. Hours when sales prohibited. This is what was adopted in 2005. It shall be unlawful for any person to sell, consume, serve, or permit to be served or consumed in the alcoholic beverages itself as otherwise listed at any licensed premises between the following hours. That language is exactly the same as the old ordinance. The restrictions change. The times go now, Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If you remember in the old ordinance, it was 6:00 a.m. to midnight on Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. Monday through Thursday, and then Friday and Saturday went to 2:00 a.m. So they changed the hours a bit. Sunday goes from noon to 1:00 p.m. So Sunday's now going from 1:00 p.m. until 12:00 midnight. New Year's Eve's falling on a day, Monday through Saturday, from 7:00 a.m. until 4:00 a.m. So they extended the hours of New Year's Eve to go an extra two hours as compared to the other days. The exception. The first exception, if you remember, the old ordinance talked about alcohol establishments with 75, eating establishments with 75 seats or more. This exception says, any licensee on premise, any licensee for on premise consumption shall have a period of 30 minutes from the time the sale of alcoholic beverages are required under this section to cease. Sounds very much like the county's ordinance. During which the consumption of alcoholic beverages may continue and within which to clear his licensed place for business of all customers and persons. But in no event shall alcoholic beverages be sold in such licensed premises after the time sales of alcoholic beverages are required under the section to cease. So the exemption for the 75 seats no longer exists. The only thing you've got is a, is a pretty close mirror to the county that says, 30 minutes after, 30 minutes after the time that you're allowed, that you have to stop selling alcohol, everybody's gotta be out of there and all consumption has to end. If not, you're in violation of the ordinance. And so that's from a historical perspective as to where we are. Does anybody have any questions on the history of how this ordinance has changed over time? Seeing none, we'll move on. So, we've got the history. I wanted to make sure we get that overview. For those who don't know, I brought this conversation to the commission and really to the city because I wanted to see where we were. It's a different day and age than what it was back in 2000, back in 2005, 2002, when all these conversations really started about. So, I wanted to bring these conversations forward. I'd had conversations with different people throughout, individuals that play golf, individuals who would go to different restaurants, and citizens throughout who would leave Putnam County and go over to St. John's County and other places so that they could have something as simple as a mimosa or Bloody Mary during brunch. Very simple things, very common this day and age with the type of restaurants you have, especially in tourist districts. If you go to some of these other areas, you'll see it quite frequently. St. Augustine, in the St. George Street area, it's very common to see that. And again, with our shift and development of the Riverfront area, it seems almost natural to make sure that we provide those mechanisms in place, especially if we've been building, we were building new docks, we're building new places, we're building new buildings, we've got hotels coming up. So that when people come to this community, they have access to everything that they need. So, I wanted to have that conversation to see what the take was from the community and from the commission as to where we were. I have concerns as to whether we were legislating morality when these clauses were put in place considering the fact that all of the restrictions were placed on Sunday, not on any other day. And that was one of the things that we wanted to look at. So, we wanna continue to have the dialogue. Last night, we had an opportunity to have our first section of our town hall meeting. It was held at the Price Martin Center. Very little turnout. We had about four or five people who were there who were not city employees. Tonight, again, not the turnout that I expected on this issue, but I would love to hear from the people who were present to have an opportunity to again have that dialogue. And so, if there's anyone who's here who wants to have any dialogue at this time, we welcome you to maybe just stand and give your name and address your question. We're gonna be very informal tonight. So if there's anyone here who wants to make a comment, at this time, the floor is open. Ms. Kitchen?
I'd like to observe my colleagues and they have a couple of people that weren't here last night, and I did have the opportunity to speak last night. So if they'd like to speak, I'd like to wait for them to speak and give them the opportunity if that's all right.
It's fine with me. We're informal, so.
Okay. So if anybody else wants to speak, go ahead, and I'll go last. Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jeff Emerson. I reside at 1007 South Seventeenth Street, Palacan. I've been before other commissions pertaining to the alcohol ordinance. And I feel like we are not doing the job we should do with the people that have a problem with alcohol. We seem to be wanting to extend the hours for these people to make it easier for them to get it. And you know, there, there are some addictions that we have that are tobacco, alcohol, and drugs. Alcohol and tobacco are probably worse than the drugs because it attacks people that have, that have, don't have the problems that people have to take drugs. Doctors say that alcohol and cigarettes is compression illness and things like that. I've never seen a disease sold in a bottle or a package. They're addictions. We've gotta do our best to get these people away from their addiction. But when you extend hours and make it easier for them to get it, you're just adding to their problems. We need, we need to cut the hours if we do anything rather than extend it. I, I have a question from the mayor. Did this just come out of the blue for you, sir? Did you just all of a sudden say, "I don't like the alcohol hours, I'm gonna do something about it"?
No, did you listen to what my first comment was? When I said that I had conversations with various people? I've had various conversations with people throughout as it relates to the alcohol ordinance. The reason we're here today is because in having those conversations with merchants, with citizens, with different people throughout the community overall, I felt that it was time for Palacan to have a conversation about the alcohol ordinance and was it ineffective too concerning where we're trying to transition to?
Well, why aren't you here? Why don't you tell these people that you've had conversations with to come down here and voice their opinions?
Where, I mean, where are the other people that you brought? Cause I only see five people in the audience.
I didn't bring anybody. I come myself.
I was just asking.
I, I didn't talk to anybody about this. I, I didn't go out and search this neighborhoods and say, "What do you think about this alcohol ordinance"? I didn't do that. All I saw was in the paper.
Okay.
And I came down to voice my opinion.
All right. We'll voice it, please, sir.
Now, these people that you talked to, were they merchants?
Are you listening to what I'm saying to you?
Were, were they, were they providers of alcohol?
I've already answered that.
No, you didn't.
Make your point. I'm not, listen, I make a living by asking questions. I'm not gonna make a living by answering.
Well, now, if you're not gonna answer my questions, then why am I coming here and talking to you about that?
You can sit down if you want to.
No, I'm not gonna sit down.
It's not gonna be, this is not gonna be a program where you're gonna come in here and be on the attack. And I promise you, I'm not the one to attack.
I'm not gonna attack you. I'm asking you questions.
Again, I've asked you, asked a question. Who did I speak to? I told you citizens, I told you merchants, and I told you interested people throughout this community who had concerns, and I had concerns. So that answers your question. If you have another question, let's address it.
What is your concern?
Are you, I'm not here to be on, on this, on this panel. If you got a public comment, make your comment. If you're not gonna make your comment, then don't.
You, you misunderstand me.
I'm understanding you fully. You, this is your opportunity to give a public comment. This is not your opportunity to take a deposition. If you wanna have dialogue with me, you can have that at some other time. But right now, you can make your comment or you can sit down. Those are the choices.
In other words, I can make comments, but I can't ask questions of the commission on why this was brought up?
I just told you why.
Because you talked to people in the, in the county, I mean, in the city that were interested in this, right?
That's kinda what a town hall meeting is. They're dealing with topics that are for discussion.
I didn't hear you say that.
That's why we're having a town hall meeting, so that people can talk.
I had a couple of notes that I was gonna ask. What change you personally would you like to see made in the ordinance?
This isn't about me personally. I'm trying to get information right now. What is it that you wanna see?
You, you are a lawyer. I can say that right now.
I'm a pretty good one too, but what are you gonna see?
Yeah, I know, you're very good.
But what do you wanna see? What, what are your wishes? Let me hear from you.
I, I want to know why you even brought this up.
Because it was a concern for people in the community. And there was an opportunity for community people to have dialogue. I want to know why you have opposition.
I have opposition at all times now. I, I, I put my opinion there. Why, I'm trying to find out why you would send the alcohol. What's the idea? Because we, because the people in Palacan that sell the alcohol don't have the same hours as the people out in the county, and maybe they're losing some money. Maybe the city is losing some money from, from the sales. That, that's all I'm trying to find out. Why did this all of a sudden come up?
This hasn't been all of a sudden. Damn, these conversations have been about since 2005.
Yesterday was said, "There's no problem, why fix it"?
Ms. Kitchen said that.
No, she, please say that.
No, Ms. Kitchen said that. Look at her. Turn to your left and look at Ms. Kitchen, and she'll tell you. If you're gonna make a point, make it fast.
Oh, you got me on time now, right?
Your time is running short.
Maybe, maybe Ms. Kitchen will give you some of her time.
She might. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll accept it.
That's up to you as a chairman to grant that or not.
I don't want you to sit here and waste anybody's time with a debate with me that you're probably gonna lose. I would rather for you to have a conversation about what your position is as it relates to the alcohol ordinance or whatever your apprehensions are, so that everybody can gather that information and we can make informed decisions on whether we're moving forward. I think the major problem that you have at this point is, everybody's assuming that we're moving forward on something where there hasn't been anything proposed to move forward on. I haven't proposed one change, and nor has anyone else on this board proposed one change. This is a fact, this is a fact-finding mission. Unfortunately, you're not giving me any facts.
You, you look at Palacan, has made great moves in the sale of alcohol. I'll say that, you've made some great moves. When I was a young boy, every street in Palacan, the old Lemon Street, had at least three bars to each block. But we had the old Yankees coming down here, and that's all they had to do was drink all day. But as time went by, we'd cut them down. We'd cut them down. And I, and part of that is due to the, the commissioner's work. I just can't, for me to see why we had to extend the hours. The hours we've got right now are working. Why do we have to change? I, I, it's something that I can't understand, and I don't, I don't know why it even came up. I think it's somebody just trying to stir the pot or something. I don't, I don't understand it.
I brought it up, and I've told you why I brought it up. And so, it's been brought up. What you, do you have anything else?
No, but I can say this. We made one change today, one hour today, next year another hour, and next year another hour. And pretty soon, we back to the same old thing, open up at 7 o'clock Sunday morning, just like it was 10 years ago.
You have a problem on Saturday?
I beg your pardon?
Have you seen any problems on Saturday, or Friday, or Thursday, or Tuesday?
No.
They go from 7 to 2 on other days.
All the laws in this land were derived from God's laws. Except for the ones that were made for the DPs and the people that were sentenced. We had to make those laws to be politically, politically correct. All laws are made from God's laws. And you keep messing with Sunday, pretty soon, he's gonna do what he wants to do. I've been, like I said before, I've been at the commission's meeting on these, on this Sunday, this alcohol stuff before. Three people in different businesses wanted to have exceptions. I came down, I spoke against them. Former commissioner here was on the board. They passed every one of those ordinances, revisions to the ordinances. Today, not one of those businesses is still in business. They're out. God will have his way with it, believe me that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Andy Hertz, 145, Brittany Lane, Palm Coast, Florida. I'm the general manager of the golf course, and I know on Sundays is our worst day for food and beverage because our golfers can't drink. Most of them play golf and leave town. We've also had a couple of events that we've lost in the last few years because of the Sunday alcohol event. We used to have a big tournament on Sunday called "For the Best Champions Restaurant" down in Salt Springs. They canceled the tournament because of the drinking laws here. But it wasn't just the tournament. A lot of their guys would come up Saturday night, get hotel rooms. There was over 100 people in that tournament, and they just moved it somewhere else because of the alcohol laws. And it, it didn't just hurt the golf course revenue, and there was hotels that weren't filled, gas stations weren't used. So, as if, being an amenity, a golf course, and a fun place for people to come, I mean, having drinks is just part of, part of the experience. We run a few big tournaments here every year. We go for waivers on the alcohol law. These guys come in from all over the country and all over the world. A lot of them are shocked to see what our alcohol laws are. They just, from where they're from, they just don't have them. It's just a little strange. I mean, I've been in the golf business all over the country and in Europe, and this is the first place that I've ever seen we can come play golf on Sunday and you can't get a drink when you're done. I'm not a drinker. I don't drink at all, so it doesn't, one way or another, what the laws are, it don't matter to me. But as a business, it definitely has an effect on our revenue, and it trickles down. We don't make money. There's a lot of other businesses in this town that don't make money too. So, if it's something that's hurting business, it's not helping anyone.
And a question on the alcohol sales and the timeframe restriction. Over the number of years that you've been associated with golf courses and the sales of alcohol between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., what would you estimate your revenue loss would be?
On, you're talking about on Sundays?
Right.
To a Friday or Saturday?
Just, just on a Sunday, I guess.
Well, Sunday is definitely the, the day we do the least amount of business because they can't buy it. But it's not just the alcohol it affects. It affects my food sale, it affects green fees. These guys that come to town spend money at other businesses too, so it trickles down to the whole community. I would say on Sunday, I mean, we, we don't do a third of the alcohol sales that we do on Monday through Saturday. Because they just go somewhere else. They leave, they leave Palacan, go somewhere else.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
I know you said we can stay at the table, but this is better for the microphone, so.
Whatever you want to do.
I don't think drinking is an issue. Drinking on Sunday brings an issue of morality. I don't think drinking is an issue of morality. You drink or you don't drink, I don't think it's a moral issue in any way, shape, or form. So I don't think it's a moral issue at all. You do have the report from the current police chief saying that between 2010 and 2016, alcohol-related calls for service, or calls for service to establishments that serve alcohol and DUIs also were down from 44 of a high to zero now. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration as I stated last night. As far as the various, as far as Sunday mornings and stuff goes with the golf course, every time the golf course is asked for the city commission to suspend the alcohol ordinance for them, which you all have the right to do, and every commission has had the right to do, they have never been turned down when they wanted to suspend the alcohol ordinance for a tournament. You all and we and all the previous city commissions have always suspended the alcohol ordinance for all the various festivals that happen two or three times a year. So I don't see changing the alcohol, the current alcohol ordinance that works. And it hasn't had no problems since, yes, it was put in in 2005. It was prompted by a previous city commissioner that loved to drink, but he saw various problems that, that were going on. So he got, he asked for the ordinance that he changed, and it was. Then we, ever since then, every couple of years, one or two businesses come up and want it changed again, or want the Sunday hours extended. I think that if your business cannot stay in business by not selling alcohol for a few hours on Sunday morning, then you're in really bad shape, and I don't, I don't think it's gonna make your drinking either way. So I don't see, I don't, I just don't see where that even is, is important. But I think, and I'm the one, you're right, mayor, I did say, "If it's not broke, don't fix it." That was my comment. Good memory. But again, the ordinance works. The police chief has said, you know, he said, "If it's not broke, don't fix it." He said that a month or so ago. But I said it last night. And I mean, it works, there's no problem with it. And yeah, I'm probably know the votes of, I know some of the votes that like the ordinance changed. And as far as the 75 seats, I've forgotten about that, but when you pointed it out, I remembered that, that thing. At this point, I don't really, we have any restaurants that seat 75 people. The proposed one at the Riverfront was gonna be 150, but apparently that might have been put in now, but it's gonna be down there, it's probably 50 or less. But I just don't see where it's an issue. As long as it's working, we need to leave it alone. However, as I said last night, I'll say a little bit more plain, like Mr., I think it was Mr. Norwood or Mr. Borrell. If you all want to copy the county ordinance word for word, I would have no objection to that. That means you cut off instead of extending hours, instead of the hours being until 2:00 Monday through Thursday, you cut them off at midnight. And then on Sunday, you start at noon time instead of starting at 1:00 p.m. And make, if you wanna make the county ordinance and the city ordinance word for word, I would have no problem with that. As far as going out of town to drink mimosas, if somebody wants to go all the way to St. Augustine to drink a mimosa and drive back for it and drink it, well, more power to them. But I don't see droves of people heading to St. Augustine. But just, I say leave it alone. It's working, it's worked for the past, what, 11 years? It, it comes up about every two or three years, every time a new commission comes in. This thing, I like, it's the usual suspects always come up, a couple of them, they want it changed. But there's nothing wrong with it right now, so I would say leave it. And thank you for hearing me.
Just one more second. You, you mentioned the 44 incidents of calls for service around that, down to zero?
Yeah, that's what the chief said last night when he was questioned about. He reiterated this when he had said at the previous meeting, right, taking the notes.
I understand, but was that, my understanding, that wasn't related to 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.?
No, he said specifically, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. on Sundays, there were zero calls for service on alcohol-related incidents on, on Sunday only. He specified that. He further specified that it had continually dropped since 2010. And when asked if that was because certain other businesses had closed, he responded with, and I quote, "No, the businesses that were still open, we, we have monitored them since 2010, and those calls for service have dropped also." He was very specific about it.
Chief, can you please answer that? And also, I like to, I like to get that report. I like to see the report so I can not have to try and remember what, what was said. I like to have at least some of the stats so I can be able to look at it.
I'll get you a copy of the CD too, if you like it.
I, I like, I like a hard copy.
I'll do two, actually. If y'all do a question.
Chief's right behind you, you can let him talk.
Yeah, if you, can I sit down here?
Well, that was just my question, asking about 44 to zero. And my understanding around that was the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That was the one that was.
Yeah, he didn't answer that, since he, I didn't see that, sorry. Thank you.
As pertaining to the stats, it was 44 to less than five, not zero, less than five. It was during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Sundays.
But you don't have the numbers from 2005 to 2010?
No, sir.
And so?
The only 2010, 2011.
So even after the ordinance was implemented in 2005 until 2010, you still had 44 alcohol-related incidences?
From 2010 to 2015, those were the numbers for, it occurred. 44 was in 2010, and less than five was in 2015.
So after, so after 2005, five years later, we still had 44 alcohol-related incidences? Can you?
I don't have the exact number, but I can say that it was a constant decrease from 2005 all the way up to 2010, and then continued to decrease to 2015.
Right. And we had alcohol establishments closing during that time, right?
That's correct.
Significant number of nightclubs closing during that time?
That's correct.
Dumises, Paradise nightclub, The Blues Club, Club 69, it was downtown. So, after, so after 2005, five years later, we still had forty-four alcohol-related incidences? Can you...
I don't have the exact number, but I can say that it was a constant decrease from 2005 all the way up to 2010 and then continued to decrease to 2015.
Right, and we had alcohol establishments closing during that time, right?
That's correct.
Significant number of nightclubs closing during that time?
That's correct.
Dumises, Paradise Nightclub, The Blues Club, Club 69, it was downtown. You had probably ten nightclubs, Spurs. We had several large number of nightclubs closed during that period of time, right?
That's correct, it was a decrease in the amount of time they were...
So, the Palaca nightlife, Johnny O's one of those clubs that closed. So, during that time, the Palaca nightlife has significantly decreased over the last decade or so. Even Big Supper Club, which is probably the longest standing nightclub here in town, still doesn't have the business that it had during that time.
Vic's operating that part-time, he's a part-time operation right now.
He's not funny about decreasing that.
But again, but again, there's a totally different structure. There's a totally different scene as it relates just to that portion of that portion of nightclubs that's out there. So, we don't have, many of those establishments are no longer existing. So, it's a different culture as it relates to nightlife in Palaca. It's a lot different today than it was ten years ago, right?
I think it is, this was, I think it's many variables that relates to alcohol.
And so, you can't sit there, so can we, can we sit there and pinpoint and say that all these alcohol-related calls were based on, that they're based on ordinance? Some other factors that we look at when we look at alcohol-related calls, and I don't mean to give you a million questions, chief, but we had this conversation and I wanted to kind of break some of that. But you still got calls that come just because of type of, because you have vagrants and other folks, right?
Well, yes, and I think looking into, just for the calls for service, during the timing question or the dating question, which is Sunday from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., it doesn't affect necessarily our alcohol establishments because most of those are closed during that time. The time for alcohol or the types of calls we got in reference to alcohol was more so our vagrants or disturbances. It wasn't necessarily from alcohol establishment. During the time from 2005 to 2010, on Sundays, those establishments from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. were closed. So, we, those calls were addressed something totally different.
And that's pretty much what I want, because we keep trying to relate the calls for services in the morning to the nightclubs, to all this other stuff that existed out there, and that's not where those calls are coming from. And so, and that's not, that's not for you, that's for when we start having that conversation. We need to understand that those calls for services that are coming from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. or from somewhere other than alcohol establishment, those are individual calls that are based upon a whole different fashion of people. And that's the part that's out there. The biggest concern I saw as it relates, and I think where the alcohol ordinance has been the strongest is as it relates to the top end, to the late-night activity, the after-hours activity. Because once you cut the alcohol consumption off, once you cut the sales off at 2:00 a.m. and you stop it before it gets to 5:00, then you strengthen your ability to keep, to reduce the DUIs and all the other stuff or the other activities that come as a result of people all drinking most of the night. And so, by having, you know, by having additional controls in at that 2:00 a.m. mark, that's where the greatest success is. But the morning hours is a whole different conversation. And so, that's not a question. But that's the part that I think, and that's why, if anything, I think it's prudent for us to understand that we're, that no one wants to see an extension of the late-night hours because that's when we start getting into the health, safety, and welfare issues. True, when you're talking about consumption inside restaurants, when you're talking about consumption at the golf course or other businesses where alcohol isn't necessarily the primary focus of sales, and you're talking about mirroring what the county's doing. And so, just for information purposes, is the county, does the county, is the county, does the county say that there are, does the county prohibit sales of alcohol from 7:00 a.m. in the morning until noon?
On Sunday?
Yeah.
The ordinance is in effect and it's prohibited till noon, but...
There's limited enforcement. Without you, is there a same, is there enforcement county-wide or prohibition during those hours? Do you see that going on overall?
I can't say, I can't respond with respect to the enforcement, what the county is doing. The actual question is, do we have knowledge of alcohol being purchased in the county during those times? Then there is knowledge that alcohol is being purchased in the county during that time.
7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.?
Seven before, seven before 1:00 p.m.
And that's inspired the ordinance, it's right. But the county has not chose to change the ordinance even though it's not being enforced?
That's correct.
It looks to me, when I look at the county ordinance, it looks like the county ordinance is only prohibiting consumption on premises during those hours. It's not prohibiting sales, period. So, the city's ordinance doesn't mirror the county ordinance when it relates to that particular part of it. So, from 7:00 to 12:00, the county is not prohibiting sales, the county is prohibiting onsite consumption. But the city prohibits consumption and sales, which is totally different. So, it's not a one-hour issue and that's where the concern changes. We're talking about a five-hour difference, really a six-hour difference as it relates to what goes on in the, for a merchant in the city versus a merchant in the county. If we're talking about mirroring, if the conversation is about mirroring the ordinance, then, and this is just general conversation, but the conversation, if the conversation is about mirroring the ordinance, then what we need to look at is the fact that the county is allowing its merchants to sell from 7:00 a.m. to noon without restriction. And nobody has a thing to say about it. The city has completely cut off the ability for a merchant who may be in an enclave that's a block away from a county merchant to even get a chance at that revenue. And so, it puts any individual who purchases a business in the city limits of Palaca at a disadvantage when we're looking at county merchants. And so, at the end of the day, the end game for us is not to mirror the county in so many ways, but it's for the city of Palaca to make itself more appealing than the county, even though we're in the same pot. But if we want to mirror the ordinances throughout the city and the county, we need to have one form of government. But if we want to make sure that we make the city of Palaca appealing to merchants, we have to have controls in place, but I think we also can't put our merchants at a disadvantage. And that's where the concern comes in. Because when you start putting people who are similarly situated at a disadvantage for whatever reason there may be, that's not fair. That creates an issue. And that's where my concern lies. Because if I'm in, if I'm lucky way down the street and I'm two blocks away from the golf course and my patrons have to leave here to go there to do the purchase and we constantly complain about the golf course not having revenue issues, then we're not putting them in a position to be as successful as they can be. Those deficits may be less based upon the fact that the patrons have an opportunity to purchase onsite. And so, those restricted, those restrictions that we have create some other issues. And so, those are the things that we have to consider and we look at because if we're talking about leveling the playing field for county merchants and city merchants, then we've got to do something different. That's my sub-boss. Any other comments?
Well, let me, let me also be clear, then the county is following the ordinance, ordinance then. When they statement that the county wasn't following ordinance, if the county allows, just doesn't allow consumption and they allow sales and all, then they are following their current ordinance.
Okay.
This is town hall, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm from the town.
Yes. State your name, sir.
Mayor, it should block, I'm here as a citizen, concerned citizen for Palaca and public count. I agree with Mr. Emerson and I agree with you, Mayor Hill, and all the commission. Thank you for having this conversation, but it's about competition, it really is. At the end of the day, how can we become that community that people want to move to? Primarily, national chains, we all hear the conversation in our families from our kids and things that say, "How come Applebee's doesn't come here? How come the other franchise doesn't come here?" Well, we're tying our one hand behind our back. The days of the standalone bars, Mr. Emerson, are dwindling. You were right on the money on that. People don't sit around in bars anymore. There are still some out there, but not many. Those days are coming. Police force, law enforcement has got their point across. Drinking and driving will be dealt with. People, pubs, family pubs are the new norm in this country. We all know it, we all go to them where people drink responsibly. You don't see public intoxication around these establishments or for most part, anywhere. It's not like it was in the seventies or that part of the eighties, I have to say. But for us as a community to tie one hand behind our back and expect to attract those kind of corporations here to provide jobs and places of entertainment for us is wrong in this day and time. You cannot throw the baby out with the bathwater. You just can't do it. You've got to look at this. There was an intended consequence when we changed the ordinance in '05. We had problems in parking lots at 4:30 in the morning, burgers, fights. We dealt with that, we have that under control. Chief Charles, records show that. I encourage you to go back and look at this establishment map. Look at their sales from '05, the year before we put that in and threw the baby out with the bathwater. You can't do that, you have to look at it. We can't compete. Municipal golf courses are going by the wayside by the dozens everywhere. This is one of the last survivors. If it does truly survive, and your chances of survival get better because the others have gone by the wayside. So, give every tool you can in the toolbox, give it to them to be able to compete. You want to bring St. John's and Flagler County golfers here on Sunday morning? You can't legislate morality. There are seven-day Adventists, there's people of all religions coming here and golfing. That's not our charge as a community to filter that out. If they're responsible with their activities, we want those people as customers, we want them as neighbors, friends, we want them to move for our community. Let's not overcomplicate this, it's about competition, it really is. Let's get competitive, we need it, you know it. I'm on board with it, whatever you need from the county. Mayor Hill, I did not realize until I walked up here this afternoon that the county had an ordinance that we were not supposed to be serving alcohol until noon on Sundays. We don't enforce it, I can tell you right now. We don't enforce it, and I'm glad we don't enforce it. And if we do get one of those corporate entities that want to move here that everybody talks about, I'm going to be the first person rallying to change the ordinance because we want that. We want responsible citizens and we'll get them. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to, as a businessperson, that to be competitive, we do go to St. John's, we are going to lodge accounting, we need to have those economic options open for all businesses, small or large, and we have to be able to be there. And again, other faiths, you know, celebrate the Sabbath on another day, Jewish appear on Saturday. I mean, I go to church Saturday at St. Monica's. So, why should somebody be any different than any other day of the week in terms of standards? An alcoholic is not going to become an alcoholic on a Sunday morning. That's a disease that is much more involved than that. So, I also support the change so the city can compete with other communities and other cities and they stay in, in the country.
Thank you. Anything else?
This is what my comments yesterday were trying to echo. What exactly is it that we want to happen? Because we're here, we're hearing, I just want to know what is the follow-up? What do we plan to do once we leave this meeting? Being that we've heard the citizens, two days, giving them the opportunity, what are our next steps?
And the other thing I'd like to say is, we came, I came to listen, to hear what you all had to tell us.
For listening, but we have to make, soon the decision have to be made. And then again, we don't want to have, continuously keep having these meetings or having all these things. We need to really come up with a plan that, you know, that will actively address this issue.
I think that's the place that we're trying to get to. But the other thing I'd like to say is, we were asked why those people weren't here. I don't think that's for the speaker, I think it's for the... We were asked why people who wanted to do this or objected to it aren't here. A lot of people won't come to our meetings, but they'll stop us on the street, come to our houses, our businesses, and talk to us. And they just don't like to come out because they don't always want people to be angry with them if they don't agree with them. So, they talk to us personally. Sometime I stay on the phone hour, forty-five minutes to hour, listening to what somebody has to tell me. But getting them into a room where they say it, they don't come. We sit in commission meeting after commission meeting and we're there almost by ourselves with staff. So, the reason we don't see some of them here is they don't want to, they want to tell us what they want to do, but they don't want everybody to know what they say, but they want us to do something about it.
Anything else? As we get ready to close, I'll say this, people make choices. This country allows individuals to be able to make choices as it relates to their daily walk of life. As it relates to our faith, we make choices. We have a choice of how we'll serve, how we'll worship. We make choices. In the business world, the business world is dictated by dollars and cents. It's dictated by profitability, it's not dictated by morality or any of those other factors. What we have to do for the city of Palaca is we have to consciously put ourselves in a position where we allow businesses that want to come into this community to truly be able to function and see profitability without restrictions, but with our levels of controls in place to make sure that it doesn't get out of control. As long as it doesn't affect health, safety, and welfare. Any of those restrictions have to be rastely related to those things. That's what the law says. But today and yesterday, our purpose was simply to have a fact-finding mission. And that fact-finding mission allowed us to have a dialogue yesterday with individuals who came forward who were in opposition. It allowed us to have dialogue since this conversation has come up with people throughout the community. Some saying, "Why are you even looking at it?" Why, a lot of folks were saying, "Well, why would you try to change it?" Because their belief was that we were trying to go to dry Sundays, become a dry city. There were people who felt that we would open up a can of worms by extending the hours past two o'clock. All those opinions are valuable, all those opinions are good. I think there's a consciousness within all of us to sit here on this commission. We would never do anything to defend the church, but in government, there's a separation of church and state. What I believe, I'm not one of those folks that's going to be out there on Sunday drinking mimosas or Bloody Marys. But again, my beliefs, my personal position should not affect my ability to look at moving this community forward. That's what this is all about. Moving Palaca forward, what's best for the masses, not for the few. What creates opportunities for revenue, what creates opportunities for tourism. And if we determine that there has been a change in the guards, a change in the culture, then we need to start to reassess things. It's time out for the Palaca that didn't want the Yankees in. It's time out for the Palaca that wanted to be segregated in the sixties. It's time out for all those things. It's time for Palaca to become unified. And if we disagree, we disagree at the table and we still work towards a common Palaca. That's what we have to do in this community. We've got to get away from thinking that our community is closed off to the world because closing Palaca off to the world has landed us on the bottom of every statistic that we don't want to be on the bottom of. It's time for us to share the gem of St. John's with the rest of the world. It's time for us to become proactive and it's time for us to step up into the 21st century as it relates to how we address issues that pertain to revenue production, as it pertains to tourism, and as it pertains to business. And until we start to look at it from an economic development standpoint, we're going to continue to lag behind. We can't hold the golf course or anyone else responsible for what goes on if we don't put them in a position to maximize their position. They have to be able to maximize their revenues. And if they're able to do that, then that's good for the community. If they're unable to do that, then you have to look at other things. These businesses that are out there, I don't want a business to say, "We'll go into the county" because the city has a restriction on us that the county doesn't have. I want people to say, "I want to come into Palaca." I want them to kick the doors down to come into Palaca so the values are up, so their tax bases up. That's what I want to see. But, I also want them to see the beauty of this small town with good people, God-fearing good people who care about one another. And we can have all of that. And it starts with the culture of the people. It doesn't start with the ordinances, because if the people can patrol themselves, then it doesn't matter what ordinance you have in place. The people that are going to be out drinking seven o'clock in the morning, you might not never get them to down the doors of the church. But, there's an opportunity for us to change the culture, and that's different. So, as we leave today, I think that this has been successful. I know the methodology was different. But, the thing that we succeeded in doing is getting Palaca people to talk in a peaceful manner about what our visions are. There's been a lot of value, trust me. Everything you said, Ms. Kitchens, has not gone on deaf ears. Sir, your words have not gone on deaf ears. There has been value in this room today and yesterday, and all those various conversations that have come from Facebook inboxes or wherever else they may have come from, or just people who randomly on the street are saying, "Well, what's this all about this in the newspaper?" There's value in all of those conversations. Now is the point where we have to sit back and look at it. If the answer is to create uniformity at this particular time with the county, and that's what we look at, if I've got to take this position at this point, I want to be one up on Commissioner Laboe right now, even though we're working towards the same goal. I want the city of Palaca to allow the restaurants or the food establishments, like they did a long time ago, to be able to have consumption in those places, because those are controlled environments, and I wholeheartedly agree that it's a different day and age as it relates to those places. But, overall, I think for an enforcement standpoint, Chief, your words didn't go unheard. We understand that if there's a mirroring of the ordinances, it makes it a lot easier for enforcement, purposes for law enforcement. We're hearing that. And so, there's a chance for us to really straighten the books up so that there's no, that there's no divide, because there's six places on St. John's Avenue that we go from city to county before we get to the hospital from the riverfront. And most people can't distinguish whether they're in the city or the county by nothing other than the green garbage can or the blue dumpster. And if that's the case, then we need to make sure that we don't leave room for confusion. And so, there's an opportunity for us to create an edge for our, for our merchants, and there's an opportunity for us to create an ease, to create an ease for our law enforcement. And I think we can do both. We can satisfy where we are, we can make Palaca better. And so, the next step is if nobody else wants to make a proposal, at some point, we'll go back and look at the facts, look at everything we got in place. I'll bring a proposal forward, and the commission has the ability to vote yea, nay, or modify. And that makes it a lot easier. But, I think tonight was great dialogue. Out of the few people that are in this room, the voice of Palaca is being heard. And so, I look forward to our next step, and I think it's going to be something that we can all live with. Any other comments? And if there's nothing else for the commission, we are, we are closed.